So, if you just want to go to the next slide, please. Last week, Tuesday and Thursday, we had over 270 of our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders students participated in what MSOE calls a STEM and Community Program. It's sort of an outreach around design thinking, and they do a variety of different activities with elementary, middle schools, and high schools. And at Whitnall Middle School this year, we did a zip line challenge, which was where students learn about bills of material, and our task is designing and building a zip line within a certain amount of time. Any of our students here that participated, you guys and gals, minds standing up? In case, if you don't have to answer anything if you don't want to, they could probably... This is not all 270 of them. I'm better at math than that. But they got put into groups of threes and fours, and were given a challenge of transporting people, ping pong balls, a certain distance over a certain amount of time. So, do you have any questions for our group?
Will they answer them if we ask them?
Semester grades are coming up, so yes.
So, how long did it take to do this?
So, how did you come up with your first idea to try?
So, would you want to do it again?
The nice thing is we have components of it within our daily lives as well, too. So, this is just sort of a 90-minute, all-in design challenge process. Could you just flip to the next page, please? Could you raise your hand if you're that group that's in the right, that right picture there? So, whether it was accurate or not, we were told that that group set the middle school design challenge record for all the schools that they've worked with in the Milwaukee area. And their travel companions, the upper left-hand corner there, how many passengers did you guys end up moving? Four? And four people in eight seconds? Yeah, so the idea was actually slow down the number of people as it kind of had like a decline going down. At first, it was four seconds, right? With one person, then four seconds with eight seconds, and then they had to keep adding. And I think you guys ended up going and working through it, too, with like not...they actually didn't give them any more budget. So, they actually traded items in, is that right? To get different items to improve upon it. So, the group that came in, the lady that runs it runs MSOE's. She's an engineer by trade, but she runs their STEM programming for schools. And she did say, to brag, like that we had some of the best design thinking group as a whole out of all the schools that they've done. They've worked in other ones, we won't name names, in the area, but very proud of our group of kids for doing that. So, anything else you guys want to add about that piece?
I'm, as a parent...
Yes.
I know that she came up very excited, and that's all she talked about. I mean, I know that the parents in front of me were there, and mine was like, we were just like coming from this feeling, and every time we made it, we had to make it bigger because we were done, and they were just all so, so excited about it. It was, we learned it, and they had fun.
You have 80 or 90, sixth, seventh, or eighth graders in our new library space, and it was focused, it was pretty incredible. So, very proud of you guys and all the other ones that participated, too. Like I said, over 270 of our kids. So, if you go to the next page, thank you, guys, for coming, thank you. I told you it'd be quick via email. With the help of Mr. Ben Williams and Ms. Swick, we have started a math club this year very recently, and I'm going to let you go.
Students meet, we've got a group, it's all participation, it's all volunteer-based, like there's no prerequisites to joining math club. We meet once a month, every, on Mondays, from three to five. From three to four, the focus is really on taking a topic and kind of turning it on its head. So, we'll be looking at order of operations with the previous week. There's some ideas with counting complex figures within complex shapes, and so the kids really get to engage in some deep problem solving around this idea that they think they know and understand. And then the second piece, that second hour of math club, we invite some of the, some students over from the elementary school, and the students engage in game analysis. So, they play some games and do some analysis at various levels. And it's a really great opportunity. In February, we're going to be taking a group of 10 kids to a competition. So, right now, we're kind of in the phase of identifying which kids are going based on availability, and then also, we took a little practice test today. Anyone in math club, you took that practice test today, to kind of help identify who will be going to represent our school. Is it anyone, I see a couple people in math club right now, anyone want to stand up that's in math club? Any questions for them?
What do you guys like about it so far?
We've only met twice, so.
Is it different to what you're learning in school during your math class? Kind of, like what?
I mean, there's just more, I mean, in math class, we learn a lot, but there's a bit deeper into what we're called.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Jantlin, maybe you can introduce the...
Her?
Yeah, just what her role is in KES, because she hasn't been in front of the board before, and she's new to the district this year, yep.
This is Janelle Swick, she's our K8 math coach. Has, we've been lucky enough to have her at the middle school for a large chunk of the beginning of the year, and then most recently, we've had to share her with Edgerton and that other school, too, HCE. So, you're welcome. And then we have one more, just another opportunity kids had, the art of writing. This took place December 3rd at the Milwaukee Art Museum. So, students throughout, I think there were elementaries involved as well, too. Laura Foul, who is our instructional coach, who couldn't be here, her daughter's got swim lessons, was part of the group, I think, with Mr. Williams, who took these kids down to the art museum on that day. I believe we had about 20 participants from the middle school. And again, students are assigned to groups that contain students across various districts, and they get to talk about their writing and/or observe and look at different various art things and have conversations. Again, similar to the other ones, that some of this is happening in art class or in other areas, but it's an opportunity just to kind of spend more time and go a little deeper and more detailed in one thing over a period of time. And we just have two very brief pictures, or not, well, they're brief, but two pictures on the next page of, it's hard to see, but that's all the students that were at the art museum, and then two of our students, I forgot, Ms. Foul said, they were taking a look and like comparing and analyzing and trying to decide what the art meant and what kinds of things that they used during that time, too. Do we have any students here that went to that? This one I didn't get to go to, is there anything you guys could add that took place at all that maybe they might want to know?
Every time, every morning, if I walk in, I have to remember.
Were you inspired to write by what you saw? Yes, no, because I know that you have to walk around, and you have to write about, right?
I would, I would draw about that.
That's fantastic. Good.
I would say most of the emails I got back from the kids or their parents said, do they have to say anything tonight? So, we're prepping them for high school, for student council and stuff when they present, so.
Well, thank you all for coming, parents for bringing your kids, and kids for coming and talking to us and coming before us, we appreciate it, thank you, and we're excited to see what the future holds. And parents, if you all want to go home so the kids can eat, by all means, go ahead.
Thank you.
Charlie's like, uh...
Yeah, it's you.
So, this donation is a culmination of the haunted hallways and fundraising efforts that occurred during lunches, primarily during the homecoming week and during the month of October. The intention, as student council representatives shared with you in an earlier presentation, was to help support the student lunch accounts. And as we've heard from the student council representatives, as they talk to food service, there's a separate account in which for students who are short funds or, you know, are in need of a little up, a treat for the day, a little upbringing that the lunch lanes can provide, that's what this account money is for, and I believe they raised about $1,300, $1,350, something right around there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the student council for your donation. Now, Lori, with the, that other school, I think Bob called, those corns elementary PTO donation.
Our PTO is just a phenomenal supporter of our school, and I think those last meeting, Chris came up and talked about Edgerton's PTO, and that we would bring our numbers all at once. So, this is a pretty big donation, sizable donation, $19,150 for our field trips. They subsidize $10 per student, that's based on the third Friday calendar, they will reassess on the next calendar in January. Curriculum-based programs, so grade levels are given $1,000 to supplement, and basically there are field trips on-site, so to speak, where they bring speakers in and opportunities that connect with the curriculum that they're learning, and that's driven by the classroom teachers. And then artist in residence, we have a team of teachers, team of staff that work on setting up these programs for the year. So, that's great support, not to mention just all the people power that they bring to our school for events like, such as mail day coming up this week. We run four times a year, a third grade runs it, and it's, wouldn't happen if it weren't for the parents coming to the building, and that's just one of many, many examples. So, can't say enough about our PTOs, and I'm looking at former PTO members, I'm sure, sitting around this table here. So, thanks to them and for all that they do for our school.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we'll go back to three comments from the audience regarding agenda items. For policy 0167.3, this is the only time public participation is permitted. Comments are limited to current agenda items. Anyone having a legitimate interest in an agenda item may participate. Attendees must register their intention to speak upon their arrival at the meeting. Participants are to preface their comments by announcing their name and address and group affiliation when appropriate. Comments are limited to three minutes unless extended by the board president, and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Comments are directed to the board, no person may address or question board members individually. Any person in group wishing to have an item considered for the agenda shall submit the request to the superintendent no later than 14 calendar days prior to the meeting. So, we do have five people registered so far, four on the same topic, so if we start overlapping with the same comments, we will truncate that and try to move on. So, first is Sandra Schramm-Wecker. All right, if you can just have a seat right here.
You can go right here if you want to, and then just, oh, that's fine, and then just turn the mic on.
Yeah. As stated, I am Sandra Schramm-Wecker, West 261, North 4388 High Street, Peewaqui, Wisconsin, 53072. I am an eighth grade teacher at Whitnall Middle School, and good evening. I am Sandy Schramm-Wecker, I teach at the middle school, I teach eighth grade science. I have served as a teacher in the district for the past 24 years, and have spent my entire teaching career in the district. I have had the privilege of watching thousands of children learn and grow over these many years. Through the past three decades, I have supported the district. I believe that the district was committed to attracting and retaining quality educators. I recognize that over the past several years, teacher mobility has increased, but I have remained in the district and have supported the mission, vision, and direction of the district through the many changes in leadership at the building and district level. I'm here tonight, just as I was last year, because as I approach eligibility for retirement benefit, it appears that the board is planning to eliminate that benefit permanently by removing the annual basis language in the employee handbook. I understand and respect the authority of the board. I support the significance of attracting and retaining talented teachers. I trust that the board has a desire to retain quality, high-quality educators at all levels of experience and years of service in the district. When Dr. Thieliki offered me a teaching job, the retention strategy for the teachers was the provision of a retirement benefit provided by the district years down the road. As a young educator, I didn't think a great deal about retirement. I was more concerned with paying my rent, buying a reliable car, and paying off my student loans, just as teachers entering the profession today. The district created a climate that led me to feel part of a family, and that environment led me to remain in the district. Teaching is complex and challenging. It's hard work, it's not for the faint of heart. And research shows that experience does matter, and it does influence student achievement. Veteran educators represent hundreds of years of service to the children in this district. We have made an impact on the lives of generations of children. We have inspired some of our former students to enter the teaching profession, and a few are now our colleagues. There are veteran teachers here and who have followed that same path, who are Whitnall grads, and who likewise returned to teach here and have done so for decades.
You have about five seconds.
We have honored our commitment to the district and have served children proudly and well. We teach our children to honor their commitment and to follow through on their promises, to keep their word.
Okay, next is Beth Volkle.
I don't know what I'm doing exactly, so be with me, because I've never done this before. Hello, my name is Beth Volkle, I live at 7057 South 118th Street in Franklin. I'm a teacher at Whitnall High School, and I've been here for about 23 years. I'm here today to talk on behalf of myself. I've been an educator here, and I've loved my job. I've taken a lot of pride in what I have done, but I do want to talk a little bit about what losing the retirement benefits would mean to me. The Whitnall School District has a longstanding tradition of providing some type of retirement benefit for its teachers who have remained in the district for decades. By removing the language, the board will, quote, "The board will decide whether or not to grant post-retirement benefits on an annual basis," end quote, from the 2019-2020 Employee Handbook, it may some, perhaps eliminate any future opportunity for this type of benefit to be offered to those who have given a lifetime of service to the district. In the supporting documents for the board meeting, the rationale for removing this language says that it is partially based on the hiring season questions given to newly hired teachers, as well as those current teachers who have offers from other districts and wanted a matching or exceeding offer from the Whitnall District. It was also stated that approximately 30 new people were surveyed, and the number of teachers who had competing offers wasn't clear. I have about 40 signatures from teachers just from today that oppose this proposed elimination. Fifteen out of the 40 are people who have been here five years or less. It is very important to them, even if they didn't necessarily make that clear to you. In the supporting documents for, oh, sorry, in order to make an informed decision regarding the removal of this language, the board may want to consider how important it is for the entire Whitnall teaching staff to be given the opportunity to respond as to what priorities are important to them, considering equitable compensation, including post-retirement benefits, as this would support our philosophy, Whitnall is all-in. as this would support our philosophy, Whitney is all in. Yes, the education field is becoming more mobile, and there are several people who have remained committed, dedicated, and loyal to the WSD. They have also, they are also within ten to fifteen years of retirement, and to see any possible post-retirement benefit be relinquished is very disheartening and disappointing. An enhanced post-retirement benefit is an incentive to stay in the district and not intended to be incentive to leave. A strong school district needs to have teachers at all stages in their teaching careers. Additional benefits of honoring and valuing staff with longevity is that they have the depth and knowledge of experience with curriculum, skilled instructional practices, through participating in professional development, and trusted relationships with families. These veteran staff members are the backbone of the Whitney School District as they provide a reassuring presence and ensure continuity for students and families in our community.
Yeah, a couple of seconds left.
Okay, uh, let me just, is, the micro credential system. That is one of the reasons why they are replacing it.
Yeah, we're over the three minutes.
We already did that, okay.
Yeah.
While it's important to keep an attractive salary for those teachers...
No, we're all, we're all, I'm sorry, we're at three fifteen.
We're all done?
Yeah.
Aw, man.
Sorry.
I'm so sorry. Well, thank you for listening and thank you for giving us the time.
Okay, next is Jay Golexson.
Good evening. My name is Jay Golexson, eighty-two seventeen North Whitney Road, Fox Point, Wisconsin, five three two one seven. Thank you for your time. Once again, I appreciate you taking the time to let us have an opportunity to talk to you. To act, not to echo a lot of the other statements that have been made, but to focus on, I believe, what Beth was going to talk about, the micro credentials. I'm just wondering, as someone who has been in the district for all twenty-seven years of my career, I've seen many people retire ahead of me with the benefits that I have been expecting for the past twenty-seven years. In 2016, when those benefits were removed, it was a big step backwards. Financial planning, I think, is important to all of us, for our families, people sending students to college, paying off loans, making house payments. It's important. My concern is, based on the calculations that I was working out through most of my career, how micro credentials are going to allow me to recoup between eighty and ninety thousand dollars in the next six, six and a half years. I don't see that possible. The second question I had about the micro credentials is actually a question for the board. And that is, could these micro credentials be presented in a way, or excuse me, in lieu of the micro credentials, could the early retirement benefit be replaced and used as a pull factor to get these new teachers in? And not only to get them here, but to retain them, just to have that same sentiment that was just brought up, that I really think that's a way to keep here, keep that balance of teachers around long-term. We've had quite a turnover in the last couple of years, and it is a little bit disheartening. So I would hope and ask that you just please reconsider removing that language. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Severt.
All right, good evening. Mike Severt, a teacher at the middle school. Just want to bring up something that was in the board packet. The sampling of data that you took with the staff members that you questioned about how important the retirement package is to them or not, I don't know if that's quite enough, a good enough sample, because that was just people you were bringing into the district. But what about data you've gathered from the staff members who have been here already? I think that needs to happen. And quite honestly, to help with the climate and culture of our district as well, for all employees, is maybe we need to look at exploring more of a long-range plan. Still, maybe you need to scale back your early retirement payout, but you need to gradually phase it out. Whereas the plan that you have in the board packet now could obviously be started for brand-new employees to the district and get that going, yet we have some very good, hard-working veteran teachers here that have been here twenty, twenty-five or more years that, you know, that is something that they were promised or dependent upon even years ago when they were hired. Yeah, they need to scale back a little bit on the early retirement, but yet there might still be enough time to earn some micro credentials as well. So you've got to find a right balance there. I just want to end with, just, we have the slogan out there called, "We're all in." And if we truly are going to follow our district motto, I think we need to look at retirement benefit options for all employee groups and see what we can do with that versus just target one group. Thank you.
Okay, next up is, is it Bob?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to remove myself. My comments were more relative to the kind of the climate that seems to be going on through the teachers and how it's spilling out into the public. I don't see that as an agenda item here, so I probably can't comment.
Okay.
My son is special needs, and we've been relegated out to a smaller room, and that seems to be...
Okay.
There seems to be some general concern.
Well, we can, we can speak offline if you'd like, but yeah, we have to keep it to these agenda items, so thank you. So we'll move on to consent agenda. A is approval of December vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of November twenty-sixth and December tenth, two thousand and eighteen, school board minutes. C is acceptance of PTO donations, and D is acceptance of student council donation. Would anyone like to remove an item? Sign on to take a motion to approve items A, B, C, and D.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sign on motion carries. Onto six action orders. A is a twenty eighteen, nineteen educator retirement benefit. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or further discussion?
Yeah. So what we're doing here is what? Please tell me.
Retirement benefit for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
As simple and clear as possible.
Anyone, go ahead, go ahead.
Having a retirement benefit for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen of twenty thousand dollars into an HRA for those newly eligible.
And how many does that affect? Do we know?
One.
One. Okay. So we had this in our handbook last year, correct?
We had this lot, we're not on that.
That's the next item.
That's the next item.
But this, this particular thing was in our handbook, correct?
There's nothing that's, there's nothing that spells out retirement language. It is all board action. So nothing in the handbook says this is what the retirement benefit is. Does that make sense? The retirement benefit is what the board approves on a yearly basis.
Right. But I thought the last year that we said we were going to do it for one more year.
We verbally said that. But we didn't vote at that time to change the language in the handbook. But that was the language we used before voting.
And what was the benefit the prior year? Do you know?
Twenty thousand last year. Twenty thousand last year, thirty thousand the year before that, and then the formula calculation before that.
And when we made the change two years ago, we talked about having it reduce over the next few years. Last year was year one of that, and this would be the final year of it.
Okay, I'm good.
Any other questions? Okay, so then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto B, Employee Handbook Educator Retire and Benefit Language. Take a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, we'll go have a discussion.
So, I mean, I know we talked a little bit last week about, you know, removing the language, leaving the language in here. If we remove the language, that doesn't mean that we can't do something. If we keep the language in, that doesn't mean that we are going to do something. So... I mean, I agree with Mr. Severt in that maybe we need to look more broadly at retirement and not just as at the educators. I know this is just educator piece in the handbook. So I don't know what I'm saying. I'm just saying, I think that we need to be clear and think about what message this sends. So if we leave it in, it doesn't mean we're going to do anything next year. If we take it out, that doesn't mean we're not going to do something next year. So either way, we will probably still talk about this next year and make a decision on what we're going to do, if anything, for retirement.
But if we took it out, we would have to initiate it to be put back in, or to bring it up.
Correct. Right now, we have to take action one way or the other each year. If it's out of the handbook, we don't have to.
So we usually approve that in August? Try to have it in June, have it ready for the year? So basically, in a couple of months, we're going to have to decide if we want to put it back in or not, if we chose to take it out.
So the difficulty with that, it's not bad to, in a way, force us to review this every year. But what happens and what we've, what we've been in the middle of for the last couple of years is that when we leave that language in, we don't always think about planning far enough ahead to make it a sustainable model. And that's the corner that we put ourselves in by leaving it in and then not, not addressing it in a timely fashion. And the sustainability of a post-retirement benefit passed what the WRS provides is, it's a tough financial topic. It's a difficult one for families. It's tough for the staff. And again, to Mr. Severt's point, it only addresses the educators. And we've had many employees in different groups that have served this district for a long time that I'm sure they would have appreciated something extra also. I, I don't mind leaving it in, but it creates a false hope, and it forces us to, in a way, throw something together that we're not prepared to be able to sustain. And we do that every year. If we take it out, then as a board, we have to make sure that we bring the question up, that we talk about all of our stakeholder groups and all of our employment groups in the district and what effect it's going to have, and that we can come up with something that's more of a sustainable model, so that we're looking after all of our employees. So I, I don't mind taking it out, but then we need to work on a better, a better plan if there is one out there that's going to help everybody.
And I agree with Stephanie, and I, you know, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of early retirement payouts. I'm just, that's just the way that it is. But that doesn't mean that I would not be in favor of looking at some other kind of sustainable retirement for all of our employees. I know we're already contributing to the WRS, and we contribute that for all of our employees, correct? So this would be above and beyond that. If we could afford to do that, I would be certainly willing to look at that.
If you remember about a year ago, we looked at those options. We had an outside vendor come in and discuss what that would cost. And we're talking about a couple million dollar upfront investment to get it started. So as a board, when we looked at that, we all collectively agreed that that wasn't feasible or sustainable at this time. So that's why we didn't pursue that right then.
Okay, but a couple of years ago, none of us had ever thought about micro credentialing as an option either.
Good. I'm not saying we can't look at it. I'm just saying that we have looked at it.
We did, but I'm also hoping that there might be another model out there, because that one, true. What we did look at was financially, it was not sustainable at all. There, we just, we wouldn't have been able to do it. So I'm hoping maybe there's a, there's a different model, or there's a hybrid or something. I don't know. This isn't, this isn't my area of expertise to do retirement benefits and how to structure it. But it, you know, a couple of years have passed since we last looked at it. Maybe there's something else out there.
Is there a, sorry, because this is my new question. When we are looking towards the next hiring season, I'm presuming that there's a kind of set hiring package that we have, like benefits and whatever, and that's kind of set before the hiring season starts. Would, to Stephanie's question, does it make sense to kind of look at the whole package at that point where annually we're looking at retirement and that kind of thing when that kind of comes up? And that's something that we go through on the board level every year, correct?
Benefits are standard across the board. Salary is the only thing that's negotiable, and whether or not an employee, if they're eligible for health insurance, takes it or not, because it's their option in terms of that. But there's no, beyond that, there's not a, the benefits themselves, they don't negotiate sick days or other... The salary can be, depending upon qualifications, experience coming in, but it's not a negotiable benefit package, if you will.
Okay.
Well, I don't think anybody came forward and answered Quinn's question from last week of, explain to me how working either an extra year or earning more money every year through micro credentialing wouldn't benefit you in the long run than twenty thousand hours into an HRA over two years. I don't think that was, we had a few speakers. I don't think anybody addressed that. One person did talk about micro credentialing a little bit, and I apologize if we can't have the discussion back and forth. I don't know how the eighty, ninety thousand range came up. But I think, I think we've stated a few times when we're talking about retirements, myself included, when I look at my own retirement, although it's years down the line, unfortunately. I look at my finances all the time and figure out what I need. If twenty thousand dollars in an HRA is going to make or break you, if you work another year for us, you'll probably make triple, depending on how long you've been here, maybe in four times that, in benefits. And that's just to you, not in an HRA. I don't like the idea that, like Nancy said, we're paying you to leave the district. If you're a quality educator, I'd rather you stay and teach another year in the district than leave and take twenty thousand hours and go. And we're not going to know that until the last minute that we have to know it and try to plan accordingly. I think we kind of jumped the gun a bit when it came years ago, when we did the early retirement thing in the beginning, because it put an expectation out there that this could be every year, or this is this great retirement package. You know, I can't retire this year. I'll just go next year. It's still going to be there. And it sort of has been phased out, as we've discussed several times. I think Mike went down the calendar of it. And we discussed it last year, and it was, well, let's come back this year, but let's make it one year, and we'll go another year extension, which is more or less what we just did for the last item. But to try and add that extra benefit, not knowing who's going to retire, when they're going to retire as an unfunded liability is tough to, tough to choke on every year, not knowing if you're going to have to pay out hundreds of thousands of dollars or no dollars, because that's what people choose. The language, I think it's created this false expectation that every year it's a fight that we're going to take away a benefit when every year we have to approve it. It's not something that's standing going every single year. It's something we have to review every year and approve it. It, it just, I think it's, it's just the false narrative that we're removing retirement benefits when, in fact, they're not there unless we approve them to begin with.
You were asking about the eighty thousand. Looks like it's kind of back in twenty fourteen and maybe even before that.
Okay, that, all right.
It was a much larger amount. But part of what I asked Mike to look at today was kind of trying to get to your question about what does an uncapped salary mean versus a standard salary? So kind of like you saw the numbers he ran was taking somebody who's got three years to work is getting about eighty thousand dollars and comparing us to Greenfield. And Greenfield is one of the ones that limits the most you can make above the previous year's thirteen hundred dollars. So for those three years, you got twenty-six hundred extra dollars at the end of that third year. That's the max salary that they make to calculate your WRS payment. And if you looked at, kind of like doing, it sounded like a modicum of micro credentials here and how much more, it turned out to be close to a thousand dollars a year extra from the Wisconsin retirement system that you could earn by fulfilling a micro credential. And that's just in that three-year period. So being an uncapped district, and we're not limiting that in any stretch, it seems like if you take ten years before that, fifteen years before that, you can make a big difference in what you're even getting from the Wisconsin system, which is nothing that we're even talking about, but an opportunity to not only bring home more money as a salary during the year, but then get that in retirement as well. You know, and again, with good planning, you have other opportunities, like plans that you can do outside of the district to put that extra money away if that's what's in your salary.
As a self-employed individual for just shy of twenty years, these concepts are hard for me to grasp at times, because I have to do it for myself and my family. Something I choose to do, really choose. So I look at the micro credentialing as me going to get the next job, or another job, or whatever it may be, to improve, to increase. or whatever it may be to improve, to increase my income. There is no benefit at the end of the rainbow for me. Again, I choose this way of life. You've chose a different way of life and these are the games that we're playing. This is not the games, this is the game that's being played, this. If I tell my employees, you got this modification, you got this, this, this and this, if I wanna have employees, I, I have to abide by that, I have to follow through on that on a regular basis. And I never give less, but I can give more. And in the holiday season, I'm, I'm giving a little bit more. So, and it's wonderful, wonderful that I can do that. But I, I have 16 employees as opposed to several hundred. So the numbers get bigger. But I think that if, I, I, I would choose to leave the wording in and force us to make a decision is what do we want? Now, we have a, we have election in April and things could change. And so, in, in May, and the next people in here may have a different opinion about it. So my opinion would be to leave the wording in. Even though I, it's hard for me to, to grasp that.
Yeah, I, I disagree. I mean, and I'm kind of shocked sitting here. Every conversation we've had leading up to this, we've all seemed to be on the same thought process of it creates undue tension and adversity in these times, right? When we still aren't guaranteeing anything. We've asked for feedback and, you know, I, I've watched people who have worked for companies for 30, 40 years, right? And have everything gone when they go to retire. They get nothing, right? No WRS, no, no nothing. So there is still a, a benefit available to people. And, and I echo Kevin, if 20,000 is the difference between you making it through retirement and not, I, I don't know. You can make a lot more staying an extra year or two or three, whatever it is, and more than make up for that. So, you know, I'm not comfortable leaving it in just because I, I think it creates undue stress and, and tension with, with the, you know, advocacy, advocacy for it. You should do it, you should not, you should do it, you should not. Whereas if we take it out, each year we can have a thoughtful discussion around it, see what makes sense with the budget, see where we are funds-wise, and then decide if you wanna do it or not. So that's mine. So at this point, everyone's had a chance to speak. So I'll take, so all in favor?
Can you read what the motion is again? I'm sorry.
It's the Employee Handbook Educator Retirement Benefit Language, removing that from the 29th through 20th.
The motion is to remove it?
Yes.
Alright.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. On to C, the Whitman High School Course Proposals, Math 6 through 12. I'll take a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D, the Whitman High School Course Fee Proposal, take a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to E, Revised Policy 9700.01, take a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second?
Second. We don't have to read it again, do we?
No. Does anyone have any questions?
Did, did, did we change whatever we said?
What I took out was the donation language. So I just took that out and, and from the districts I talked to, it's up to the company to decide if they want to pursue anything that's tax deductible. It's, it's on them and not on us. So I just took out the language of donations.
And if they want a letter or something, they'll certainly ask for it.
They want a letter, I can certainly provide it to them, but it's, it's on the company to determine that.
Okay. Any other questions? All in?
I would say thanks for everybody that went through that policy and the effort that we put in, so nicely done.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F, 2019, 2020 Calendar, can take a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we, I know it's been out there, have we received any other feedback that wasn't to the board about it? No? I meant like, 'cause in the past, we've had schedules that have gone out and it was an immediate, why are you doing this, why are you doing that?
Yeah, no, I think the process, because the, the calendar for next year mirrors the calendar for this year. And it went through a committee and those teachers had an opportunity to provide feedback and I did a Q and A document with them. And now that we're sort of going to this regional approach to spring breaks with, I think that there's a clear understanding of how calendars actually developed. Yeah, I, I've not heard any since then.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll take them, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. G is Whitman School District Safety Crisis Plan, take a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second?
Right.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. F is the High School Asbestos Removal from the Referendum, a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
Are we, yes. Are we giving the, are we, are we giving out the whole package or just the base bid one?
Base, base bid one, correct.
Base bid one, the ultimate is if there are funds available to do these health and living windows.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's the base bid, yeah.
Base bid one of 42,187.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven is Reports. A is School Safety Update.
Oh, in your packet, do you want to, you want to do that? With the school safety update?
Oh, sure, yeah, thank you. So, so what you see in the packet is something again required by Act 143, which is a, basically an evaluation of the state, of the, of the safety drill that we did this past spring. As a board, we, you guys did review that back in, in May. But with Act 143 being very new at that time and not really knowing what it means, you just have a written evaluation that the board approves. So this is that written evaluation. Most of the time, a, a safety drill is going to not be a whole district as it was this past April. And in that case, you would get a written evaluation for each building when they go through an annual, what they call a safety violence drill. So this one was all encompassing because it happened with all the districts at once. But moving forward, you're gonna see it at each, each particular building.
I want to clarify, you said approve. The board does not need to approve, they need to see.
To see, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to be clear because it's not under action.
Correct, they need to see it. And so me pointing to this, to the minutes here will, will satisfy that requirement that you've seen it and it's in the public packet. Yeah.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, move on to B, Referendum Construction Update.
Todd, you want to come on up just in case, well, in fact, and when I don't know what I'm talking about, you can correct me. So since the last board meeting, we've had, we're now on weekly construction updates with CG Schmidt, bi-weekly with Bray Architects. So she, CG Schmidt's kind of taking over as far as the week, as far as the majority of the communication that's now happening. So lots of, lots of things going on, although we're still in the early phases clearly. And so the meetings are still under an hour, which is great. A lot of the focus has been on safety, training new staff that's coming out with CG Schmidt, putting extra signage in and around God cell. Initially, when you, when the trucks put Hales Corners Elementary into the GPS, it takes you down God cell. And so we've tried to put, CG Schmidt's tried to put a lot of extra signage up for those, for, for the safety of, of that. They're also gonna be working, if they have not already, working with Lori on how to do fire drills for the remainder of the, of the year, as you've got different headaches that go along with, with that. So lots of focus on safety so far. The scheduling, Todd, you might be able to get a little more detail on this. We're at, we're essentially digging for footings right now.
Correct. So we established a building pad for the addition. Couple setbacks with that, we were looking for some good soil at HCE that we can establish a good pad for the building to go on. We were unable to find that good soil, so as the effect of that, we had to haul in recycled concrete to make the building pad for the, for the new addition on the building. That set us back a couple days. That building pad is there, it's established. Our engineers are there looking at that building pad, making sure that the compaction is right so it'll support the new building. And then as of last week, Friday, they started digging footings for the addition and that continued today. They have part of the access road in, they brought in their job trailer today, so things are moving along. It's exciting.
So talking about the, the, what we're calling bad soil, that was our first dip into what we're calling our contingency. Contingency is about $600,000 at Hales Corners. And what this means is that this soil that's needed for the, for the pad and also for the service road as well that we're finding, for the trucks to get in and out, is gonna be somewhere in the $40,000 to $50,000 range that we needed to dip into contingency right away. CG Schmidt tried several different alternatives to try to find good soil on the site, including looking at the, the dig out for the retention.
The retention area.
The retention area, seeing if there's good soil there to use, looking at different areas on the site. None could be found there. And so they went with the cheapest option, which is that recycled material to bring it in. Typically, the contingencies will not be this large right away. And so kind of a, for lack of a better term, a bummer that we have to come right away with a contingency of this much. Now, the CG Schmidt would like to know and, and my, and I'll give you my take right away, when there's contingency like this that's being used, CG Schmidt specifically wanted to know what's the role that the board would play in this. Typically, contingency means for us that there really aren't any other options. I mean, we want as much contingency as possible to be able to take on numerous other projects that we want. And so contingency to us is something that really has to be done and there really isn't too much discussion to take place. And so they want to know, will the board need to, to, to look at that before we do anything? Most cases, I said, the board, as, as a board, you usually just ask, what do other districts do? Most it's just a, we're letting you know that we needed to dip into contingency for this specific purpose. And, and if you're okay with that, that's how we'll continue to kind of conduct business with, with respect to contingency dollars. So...
Well, we can't have to, because if it's a timely issue, we're not going to convene to discuss, to vote, to think, to, we don't trust experts.
I'm just being forward and, and letting you know there's gonna be these contingency issues that come. And most of the time, we're gonna be letting you know after the fact, if the board would say, we don't want that good soil, then we're not building, so.
So what, what number would you be uncomfortable making that decision without letting us know?
I would stick to board policy, which would be under 25,000. This was an instance where it's gonna be greater than 25,000 and thus I felt the board should know based on our policy of purchasing.
Should know, but you did it though, right? It happened?
Yes, it happened.
Okay.
Yes, it happened.
So I go back to my question, what number are you comfortable with is?
He's talking about if there's approval process.
Right.
Just a no.
Without letting us know.
Oh, oh, um, without, well, needing, needing board action before a contingency?
No, I didn't say a board action, just notifying us. So maybe the next time, when you do go over that threshold, you should notify us with an email that this is going on.
Okay, alright.
But yeah, so I guess the 25,000 is the threshold is the number that we should, if everybody agrees.
Why?
Why? We should know. There's a policy, either, either or.
Yeah.
You asked me why, so there's a policy in place, it wasn't followed this time, it needs to be followed. I'm not saying that we say no, but we should be notified of it.
I would've said that we shouldn't even put a threshold. Anytime we dip into the contingency, we should be notified.
Well, we still have to follow the policies, whether we're doing a referendum or a regular build out or, or improvement.
But it's not a special purchase.
Of course it is.
The budget's already set for the project, it's not an additional purchase.
It's outside, it's outside the scope of the work. Otherwise, it would've been in the work. If we didn't have, if we didn't have to tip in, dip into our contingency, it would've been accounted for in the, in the, in the project.
Contingency is part of the 16.16?
Right, that's my contention.
I can, I have no problem letting the board know as soon as we know that something is going on.
So then?
It can't stop.
With this discussion that I ask, so the policies don't, don't come in play for this, for this referendum?
Well, the purchases in essence approved already at 16.16 million. I'm, was simply using it as a guideline to know whether the board should know about a contingency as part of the 16.16 or not. None of the purchases need to be pre-approved by the board, it's part of the 16.16. I have to follow the question, I have to do all those things that have already been approved. This was a way to let you know and give you an update that contingency?
I'm not asking for approval. I get what the plan is, but I think that we need to inform when it's going on.
So...
Well, that's what he was trying to do tonight, that's what he was saying, that's what he was doing tonight.
When did this happen?
Last week, Wednesday.
I mean, I sent an email saying this is going on. I think we need, in, in, just my opinion, there's six other people here that may disagree. Because what happens if we, we get into issues and not that we, that eat up the contingency? And then we, and then we're at that point and go, wow, what happened to all that money? It could've been 10,000, 15,000 increment and, and well, well needed. I, I don't say that, sure. I think we just, I, my opinion is I think we need to be informed of those, any over 25,000 that's not, that is part of the contingency.
So he is informing us now? And that's what he's trying to do? So you're saying instead of having it in a public forum, so?
He can do it in a public forum as well.
You want an email as soon as it happens saying that?
Well, here's what we're up against, just letting us know. And again, that's just my opinion, if it's not the rest majority?
Anybody else have a strong opinion on this?
Well, I wouldn't, I mean, I'm not saying it's something that's required, I think I'm more on Stephanie's line since we did budget for it and it's part of the thing. I don't think, I think it would be okay if we got an update every once in a while, are we still well within our contingency versus the plan of the project? But I mean, I don't, if, if something major happens, you're like, okay, we're almost out of contingency fund, that's probably more us I care about, I guess I don't, this doesn't bother me as far as the update. You gave us the update, I know what you're saying as far as letting us know right away. I don't know.
I mean, we're gonna have at least monthly construction updates, we have up until this point. So, and I think it was a unique situation where it happened last week, Wednesday, we have a meeting coming today so we can get the report out. Do you have any thoughts?
It makes sense to me, you know, just 'cause it is a big project, it, it makes sense to be updated when, again, something not planned happens. You know, we're kind of given updates as things, as things go along, saying that, you know, here's what's going on, here's the next step, here's this next step. And I think, you know, having a $25, $25,000 minimum to kind of say, oh, oops, the soil didn't meet the compaction rate. Okay, it's, good to know, I, you know, am I gonna do anything about it? No, but it, just to kind of keep abreast makes sense to me.
Nancy?
So I'm probably more in the line with Kevin. And, you know, I think if we have a monthly update or something, that's fine. The only, the only thing is, is like when things need to be done and money taken out of the contingency, that's fine. If it's a choice of, do we go with, you know, $300 a yard carpet or $50 a yard carpet? Very bad example, two of them I can think of right off, you know? And that money, extra money's gonna come out of the contingency, then I think that's a whole different story. But something like this that needs to be done should just be done, they're the experts.
I, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done.
Well, and I'm saying, I don't, I don't need to know every time that that happens.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the monthly or bi-monthly, how do you feel, you need to do it, updates that get at the board meeting.
This way it's all out there, otherwise you're sending individual emails and then you're repeating the same information again at a board meeting. We're going to get the update at the board meeting anyway, I'm, I'm comfortable with just doing that.
Enough.
Okay, any other? Anything else?
Is it right now?
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, C is SWSA Report and Legislative Update?
I missed it, I was on vacation. Don't know why it wasn't the first Tuesday and not the second Tuesday. Lisa did speak about it last week, the last, at the last meeting, so do we, do we know if it's the first or second week?
Second, it's January eighth.
I do, and I have that on my calendar, so I'll be there for that.
Okay, great, thank you. And then D is School Board PTO and Liaison Reports. Anyone, any updates since the last report?
Yeah, uh, so I attended this past PTO at Edgerton and two things that I, uh, you know, it's the regular minutia, but, uh, two things that I thought there was. You, you can't say it, I can't, all right? So, um, they're going to work together with HCE and the middle school, uh, to get, um, a high. Yeah, you want to speak to that, Chris or Lori?
Why does it say minutia?
No, this isn't the minutia.
This isn't.
We're just ignoring the minutia.
It's the outside.
So, uh, when we bring in an artist, um, it's really expensive to bring in, um, a quality artist or an author, um, someone national. And so we're trying to pool our resources together. The, uh, middle school PTO now has some pretty dynamic people on it. And, um, and so we were talking, Bob and I were whispering back there, that was one of the things we were talking about, which was, um, trying to get HCE, our, their PTO, our PTO and their PTO to come together to bring somebody in and spend like a week with us and do some workshopping with the kids, rather than just to stop in and do your presentation and leave, actually start a project that we can continue. So, um, so yeah, so we're hoping that comes together, now we're almost going to have to do it. That was a concept a couple days ago. The book is The Beautiful Oops, which, and the message is, uh, making something out of your mistakes, kind of nice, so, yeah.
So, hold on, and the other thing was, uh, possible summer bookmobile?
Okay, here we go. Um, so, uh, we're trying to secure funds, um, through donations or through fundraising, to do a summer bookmobile and actually both schools at the elementary, maybe even the middle school now, um, might want to, uh, pursue that. So we're just in the very early phases of, um, trying to get a bookmobile because the main thing that we're noticing over the summer is not only the summer slide, but the summer slide for kids with equity, um, issues and not having resources over the summer. And that really just, summer by summer, that just snowballs. So, uh, trying to get more books in people's hands, um, at the places where they are at, rather than, uh, having them come and attend all of our events. So we still want to do that, but we're, um, we're exploring other options, so, yeah.
That'd be really cool, so, that's all I have.
I can, I'm excited to hear the collaboration between the PTOs, because I know in the past you'd bring it up and I felt like I was going to be run over. But it's nice to see the collaboration and working together to create some unifying experiences for the students, especially since they all co-mingle together once you get to middle school. It's nice if they have some of the same, oh yeah, remember when we did this, oh yeah, I remember when, oh, we met over at this, right? Instead of just foreign entities merging together, so, um, that's exciting, thank you. Stephanie, you were shaking your head.
Yeah, it was, because we had some of the same things going on at the middle school PTO. And just knowing that they're willing to reach out and work together is, is really a powerful thing for the whole district. One of the, my personal highlights of this PTO meeting was being able to talk to the student council members at the middle school to let them know about what's coming up for the high school if they want student council. And that that whole cycle is going to start earlier so that whoever is elected for the freshman class has a little bit more heads up as to some of the responsibilities and what's going to happen when they're on student council in the high school. And that student council at the middle school, they're having, um, they're having parents help with, uh, decorate the door contest, for judging, helping, whichever one of the dance. Again, they're really, really a, a good group of kids and they're doing a lot of things for the, for the school. Had, had a brief deduction, uh, discussion about Harley Davidson coming in as a possible event, so that was, that was kind of an exciting thing. Mr. Antline was able to bring some details about that. And they're a hardworking group of parents, they're doing a lot of fundraising to get some of these things to happen. There was some discussion about starting a club, uh, like a cooking club and being able to, to teach some basic cooking skills as an activity to some of the students or someone who'd want to participate. So that was, that was part of the discussion too, if, if that could be done. The other highlight was the work that got done on the book fair. And Bob, if you remember, how much money, I want to say eleven hundred in scholastic dollars for teachers to purchase, is my number right?
Like four hundred and some dollars per grade.
Yeah. To come in, that the teachers could shop the scholastic and add to their resources for their classroom. So that was a great, a great turnout. I mean, you can always get more and hopefully next year will be even bigger, but it's a, it was a good start. So again, they're hard at work.
Great, thank you.
Well, HCE PTO didn't meet and they meet on the fifteenth, give me a thumbs up, they meet on the fifteenth of January. I mean, it is ugly sweater day on Friday, so there's that going on.
Not, not Monday?
You're, you're ahead of the game. That's what I got for that, yeah.
Stephen, who does not have an ugly sweater on today?
I don't own any.
Well, I wouldn't go that far.
No, the Worcester Club for the High School doesn't meet in December, their next meeting's January eighth.
Great. Nancy, we haven't heard about the Park and Rock for a while.
Yeah, well, we were supposed to meet last Thursday and the meeting got canceled, so, but thank you for honoring Scott, I think he was very touched with that. So I was, uh, looking forward to talking to him on Thursday to see how he, how he felt about that and, uh, the meeting was canceled, so, uh, we'll meet in January.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you all for your work, thank you. Um, we'll move on to items for future consideration. Okay, uh, nine announcements?
I have one.
Hey.
So on the homepage, um, I am going to talk, sure, I, I can talk tonight, sure. Uh, shared with you, if you are a parent of an alum in the last several years, the last four years, we're doing, uh, a profile of a Whitnall graduate. We've realized in some of our work, um, and as we looked at that redefining ready dashboard, that really should be driving our work, like what we want all of our graduates to have. And we're really, we haven't really defined that, right? And so part of it is, if we aren't asking, because there's a lot of research out there, national research, that's saying what graduates need from high school. But we also need to take a look at what do our graduates here in, you know, at Whitnall High School, what are they saying? One, two, three, four years out, we don't want to go too much further out than that because things have changed enough. So parents of the alumni from those four years, students, trying to, uh, capture those who, who went off to school maybe while they're back for break. But we also have evenings, so students who may have stayed around and are working or maybe in the military, try to provide some options for them to come, get feedback from their parents, what they've noticed once they've graduated, skills that have helped them navigate life after high school and things we could have done differently. And then talking with our business and civic community leaders in terms of what they're seeing, in terms of what, what they look at, which is different than just the research. And it's different than asking current students and current parents, right? That's a very different lens, they're projecting what they think they will need. I think that this is a really critical group of people to ask because they're most recent in terms of what those students actually do need and where they, where we fell short, um, and where are some things, because if we did some things well, we don't want to get rid of it, right? But if there's some things that we didn't prepare them. So I think this is really critical to our work in determining what it is in, whether it's social emotional learning, whether it's academic skills, what are those things that they wished they would have had more experiences or we would have placed a greater emphasis on here? So I think that these are critical, um, and I, I hope we have a lot of folks, um, join us. And we did focus groups rather than surveys, because surveys are one-way and a lot of times that's left up to interpretation. If you just like rank this or what's your rating on this? We want to have a two-way dialogue about, tell, tell us more about what that meant. And so our focus groups have been our most successful in getting meaningful feedback. So hopefully, um, if you are one of those parents or, or make sure that your child is, you know, received that email and, and attends and that you consider that also because we think that's really important to hear from them.
How are you getting the businesses to participate?
Yeah, so we, um, I'm on both of the chamber boards, the Greenfield Chamber and the Hales Corners Board and belong to a couple different, either know or belong in a couple civic organization boards because we want to hear from them in terms of that. So that's the connection for them to be, to target them and they have mailing lists out there, so it's going out to theirs a little bit differently. Yep. And it's also, the Whitnall Window went to the printer last week, it should go out any day, so it goes out to all of our residents. So this announcement was also in the Whitnall Window, so.
Well, speaking of the Chamber of Commerce, there's a couple of scholarships available since, you know, they do give those away. Last year, they didn't give one of them away because no one applied, but there's one for a four-year university as well as one for a technical school. And last year, nobody even applied for the technical school, they emphasize it's a very easy application and encourage everybody, whether you're going to four-year or technical school, to apply for it, because who doesn't want that extra thousand dollars to go toward your tuition? The Greenfield or Hales Corners? Hales Corners. Have to be a resident of Hales Corners? I don't know, apparently not.
Just attend Whitnall High School.
There you go.
He was taking notes at the social.
Taking notes.
Making notes.
Yes. Any other announcements? Okay, so then time, meeting debrief?
I have something, uh, do we, did John call ahead to let you know?
We received an email this weekend.
Okay, then I think it should be notified either way on the minutes, is it?
He's absent or in attendance, you mean?
Well, um, that it was, um, we're notified. I mean, huh.
Oh, you're saying?
Saying whether it's been notified.
Sure, because if, I mean, ultimately they want to lift the sanctions or whatever you want to call them, but, um, and this will go a long way to documenting what we, what we posed on for the recent part.
So some minutes that I've seen to follow up with that, like, um, so the November twenty-sixth minutes, said board members absent, me, I was absent. Normally you would say excused or unexcused, so I was excused, I'd notify you ahead of time, whatever. So it's unexcused if you didn't, just, just didn't show up.
Okay, we can work on that and try to get something in place.
Because I think it is the goal, it should be a goal on this board to.
Communication.
And just to clarify, excused would be prior to the meeting, not post-meeting, right? Okay, I think that that's okay.
Aside from that, I think we had a good discussion tonight and I appreciate the civility in which we handled everything, went really well, I think.
Yeah, um, I, um, I don't know how to carefully say it, but, so I just won't, um, it's, it's empty now, right? We had other items on there, whether it's course proposals, course fees, other things, right? Last week, we were discussing, I'm sorry, discuss, discussing, um, the math courses, right? We know people that were here who are math teachers, no interest in staying, to listen, be engaged in that conversation, to understand what's really happening, right? So if, if the focus really is on our students and our learners and our kids, you would think there'd be more engagement and participation and attendance for the kid-related items and not just, uh, not just this. So that would be my, my thoughts on that. So, okay, with that, uh, happy holidays to everybody, happy new year, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, have a great night.